Okay. Good evening, everyone. With the time being six P M on Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, there were changes issued by Governor Baker modifying the open meeting law requirements given the COVID nineteen pandemic and certain COVID nineteen measures that were adopted during the state of emergency have been extended, including those allowing public bodies to conduct meetings in a virtual forum as long as the public has access to the meeting. This meeting has been posted on the district website with a Zoom link allowing the public to join. As another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both audio and video and will be posted on the district website. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session according to M G L thirty A S two nineteen A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares and to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Back to.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Can you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes, so I believe the committee will be entering into a breakout room and the other participants will hang out for a while.
All right, so I'm gonna do this the best I can and Colin, I'm gonna put you in charge. If anybody comes and looks and wants to know where we are, tell them we'll be back. We're in an executive session and it shouldn't take too long. So let's see, I'm gonna sign. Linda, Lori, Blythe. Lori. Kathy. Okay. And now what?
Okay, I believe we have all returned. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval and release of the executive session minutes for a corrected date on the agenda of July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Linda, you're muted. Were you able? There we go.
I got it. Sorry, second.
Lori, there's a motion in the second. Could you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallette?
Yeah.
And Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on in the agenda, we are going to be skipping over the superintendent's report tonight. She has a family emergency, so moving on with the agenda, we have the business managers' report.
Thank you, Miss Perangeli. Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I'll jump right in. The first item on my agenda is the school building committee update. I'm not sure if I reported at the last meeting, but Dr. Gogan and I did attend the M S B A board meeting on August twenty-fourth with our O P M and architects. We were approved by the M S B A to enter into schematic design phase. So what that means is that we are looking, we have an approved design, I should say, a small design, option three, that the architects will be working on and becoming more detailed and finishing up those designs to be more complete, to give us better pricing and options to put out to the public. There was a little bit of feedback from the M S B A. It was all good feedback. They are looking at the project and are very excited about it, actually. So the O P Ms and the architects are jumping right in. We do have a building committee meeting tomorrow night, or I'm sorry, Thursday night, and we'll be getting more information then and starting to work through the schematic design and updating our timelines and looking at reimbursable and non-reimbursable and start working through some of that information. So I will have a little bit more detail to share with you at our next school committee meeting after this coming Thursday. Are there any questions about that? Okay, next. Next item is a new online payment system. Over the past month, I have been working with the town, the treasurer's office and the town accountant's office who are implementing a new online payment system. Some of you may have already noticed that if you've gone online to pay your taxes or water bills or anything like that. It's called City Hall Systems. We are moving away from the Unibank online system. We have brought over our school lunch, our before and after school program. And what's exciting about this is that I'm gonna be able to implement our student activities so they can pay online. So in the future, any yearbook payments, class dues, A P exams, all of those payments will be able to process online rather than the cash going back and forth, which is much better. And also with this system, our checking, if you're paying from your checking, it's free. And the rates, if you pay for a credit card, are much lower. They're two point seven nine. So we are all set with that, and that is up and running. You can get there from our website. If you go under Parents, there is a link for online bill pay system that you can get, and it is active now, and we'll be adding the student activity information shortly. Any questions about that? Okay, next item on the agenda is a green community grant. So a while back, I reported to the school committee that we were partnering with the town. They were applying for some grants on behalf of some of the departments in town. We did receive two grants for green communities. One of them is a lighting project at Webster Middle School. We were awarded, let me get to the price on that, we were awarded a grant, a total project cost of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. What that is gonna do is install L E D lights in the middle school, so we're gonna see about thirteen thousand dollars in annual savings from that project in utility and electrical costs. And then the second project that we were approved is a weathering project. We received thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. The actual grant funding is twenty-nine, and the five thousand is from utility incentives that we received. What that is gonna do is they're gonna be weather stripping and sealing some of our exterior doors. They're gonna do our overhead doors, seal them. They're gonna put some foam board and seal them with two-part foam in certain areas, and they're gonna be looking at a roof and wall joints to be sailed with some foam. So we're excited about that. The work will be done, needs to be done before December, the end of December. So I've talked with the contractors, and they will likely be working on second shift. After the kids go home, they'll come in and work the second shift so they're not disrupting the school day and starting to change out those lights. So that's a great project. Again, we're gonna be, show some, you know, long-term savings from that. The lighting is not gonna complete the whole school, but it's gonna give us a good part of the school. So we're hoping that maybe in the future, we could apply for the second part of the grant and potentially finish up the project for L E D lighting. But we're hitting the big areas in the school where we're gonna see the most bang for our buck in that. So any questions there? No? Okay. Next item, just a couple of other updates. We did end up getting our shades in about a week after school started, so the company came in and replaced all the window shades in the building. And that was finished up last, last week, so I'm excited about that. The teachers are really happy. The other ones were pretty banged up after fifteen years, so that, that was a nice addition to do. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about transportation. We have been off to a great start with our year, our school year. Transportation is running smoothly. I know it's been a hot topic. You've seen on T V many of the districts that are struggling with transportation, and I'm gonna hope everybody knocks on some wood around them that so far we haven't had any disruption in our service. We haven't had to double up any runs. Not saying that in the future, we won't need to do that. But right now, all routes are being covered. I can tell you that transportation has is using every body they have to drive. Many times, the ladies in the office are out driving. So their office is unmanned, and we get put to Shrewsbury if something comes up, but they are utilizing all resources they have. Where we're seeing the difficult time is that overlap in the afternoon around sports times with the buses. In the past, our middle school and high school traveled separately to sports trips, and we have had to combine some of those routes as we are the bus company will pick up the high school and middle school kids and maybe drop one group off at their field and go on to a next field if it's close by. And then knowing that sometimes these sports finish at different times. Later in the day, it's a little easier to get drivers, so they've been going out later in the day to kind of finish up those runs with two buses versus just having the kids sit there and wait. So we've been able to juggle it and man those buses, and I'm thankful to AA Transportation for being creative and their hard work and dedication on our behalf, because I know a lot of other communities are not as fortunate, and hopefully we continue on this path. And, you know, I know they're saying they're hiring all the time. They've got a bunch of drivers in training, and they're hoping as the year goes on that things are gonna smooth out. They're gonna have more drivers onboard, and things will settle down a little bit for them. But we're off to a great start, and we are excited to be back for the school year. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Sounds like a lot of great building improvements going on. How very exciting. Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
All right, now, moving on to the principal's report. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
A busy day, but we got through it and happy to be here this evening. Okay. I know Dr. Gogan is not here. She had a chance to meet with Colin today. So before I get into the specifics, just in case she didn't get a chance to pass that on to Ms. Perangeli, I'd like to say a few things about Colin, if I might, before he issues his report. Colin is a truly great representative and ambassador for Bartlett High School. He is a varsity soccer player, basketball player, and tennis. He's a member of the National Honor Society. He's also vice president of his class. He's done a lot of community service. He and his brother helped unload some boxes and books and stuff this summer. He's just a great young man that I've had the pleasure of getting to know since I've become principal here. And I knew he would do a good job. He's done the announcements at school. So I know the school committee will be very favorable with him as a representative throughout the year. So I'll let you speak later on, Colin. I just wanted to make sure you had a proper introduction. One of the first things I want to talk about is new enrollment. At Bartlett High, we've been very busy. We have forty-three new students since school began. And for a school that only has a little over four hundred students, that, that's quite a bet. Some interesting stats from that, nineteen from Worcester for a school choice. What I'm happiest about is nine have returned to Bartlett High that had dropped out or somehow become disengaged, and they have come back this year. So that's, that's very encouraging to us. The fifteen students who are not part of the Worcester, the nine returning come from a variety of places. There's no pattern, but I just thought people might find it interesting. Three came from Framingham, two from Dudley, two from the Dominican Republic, one from Guatemala, one from Puerto Rico, one from California, one from Clinton, one from Hudson, one from Louisiana, one from Somerville, and one from South. So you can see, we have a wide variety of students that are choosing Bartlett High. But with that, like I said, we have forty-three new students. Add in hundred and thirty or so freshmen that are new to the building, and then the sophomores who were remote last year as freshmen. So almost half the school, this is their first time in Bartlett High School. So we're having the usual high school scheduling, shuffling issues and things like that and getting people acclimated, but we're off to a very good start. Second thing I'd like to talk about is a program that we're piloting through Google. And I'm very excited about this because this is a program that we are one of the first public high schools in the country to be offered this opportunity. Typically, they do this for community colleges or vocational schools. So it's a three-pronged part of this program. One is, we will be offering a course under Office Tech that will train kids to be I T help desks. They will get certification through Google to do this. What is really impressive to me about this program is, one of the parts of it is, there's a gentleman who's part of the program, whose sole job is to connect those students with prospective employers so that as they're going, he's locating people who have this need. I know I spoke to Mrs. Blythe about this before because that's in, in her wheelhouse, and she's saying, yeah, we're, we're looking for help all the time. So through a half-year course, students will have an opportunity to get Google certified in technical support fundamentals, which will allow them to staff some help desk. Like I said, those types of opportunities, as we all know, are in virtually every employment situation now, whether it's Target or Walmart, where everyone needs I T support these days. So we're very excited. Pilot program, like I said, we're gonna fold the curriculum under an existing course, and we'll see how it goes, and then hopefully we'll be able to run the course twice next year on its own as a separate thing and enhance that curriculum based upon what we have. There's also a separate component of the program that offers I T support and training to our, to our teacher who's gonna do this. So it's, it's a great opportunity for us. We're working with the business office. The Central Mass Safety Council approached us over the summer about possibly offering driver's ed to our students in our building. So we're discussing that with them, the, some of the things that that they offer that may be advantageous to us as opposed to a, a different company outside of that is they would allow us the opportunity to, to provide three scholarships, and they also allow parents to pay an installment, which is usually not the case in, in an external thing. So we're working with the business office to see if we can come to an agreement where it's, they're a private vendor, so obviously there's a business arrangement that has to be done. So we're hopeful that that can come to fruition so that we can offer that to our students. And then lastly, our one-go program, we're launching another cohort this year. Cohort that we started with, this is a senior, so this is very critical for them in terms of their college selection and filling out the F A F S or in those sorts of things. But we're happy. We have another teacher doing this, is Ms. Doherty doing this, and I, I believe her class is fourteen or fifteen students that are undertaking this. So this is our second year of, of that cohort group. And again, this is a program designed to aid first generation, potential first-generation college students through the maze of deciding what type of school they wanna go to, what interests them, career explorations, and then the even more daunting maze of filling out applications and financial aid and that sort of stuff. So we're very excited to have a second cohort doing that. And that's my report for this evening. I know Colin will have some more stuff in general about what's going on at Bartlett High School, so I don't wanna steal a thunder from him. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from anybody. I know Mr. Carney's gonna come up separately and, and speak about the show choir and that, so. But if there's any questions from, from my portion, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Through the vice chair?
Yes, Member Blythe.
Um, first, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Thomas, for continuing to bring new programs to the students at Bartlett. You may have said this, so I apologize if you did. Which students are eligible for, for the Google certification? Is it freshmen? Is it seniors?
It can be anyone. Well, the, the idea is try to pair them up with employers, so we need to make sure that they're old enough, at least to get like a work permit at the end of it. But it will be open to anyone. We're gonna have to, you know, it won't start till the second half of the year, so when we had our program of studies, this wasn't even in the works. So we're gonna have to promote it and see who's interested in that sort of stuff. But there's no class limit on it, but like I say, we would like to have students at least have the opportunity to, to go work at, as a result of this.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's a great program. I know you and I have had conversations about it, and I have just a general question. With last year being the way it was, we didn't really have any college fairs, right? I, I think maybe we had one, right? If any, are we planning on having those this year for the juniors and seniors?
I believe there's one in a couple of weeks, if I'm not sure. What we're gonna try to do is do one for the seniors currently in the fall, and then another one for the juniors later in the spring, so that we can kind of cut down on the numbers in the gym just in case, but have one in the fall for the seniors and try to really focus in, get those seniors more laser-focused instead of like wandering around to see, you know, which color brochure is liquid, but.
Get them back in the groove and kind of more focused to where they're interested, yeah.
Yeah, to figure out what schools they really wanna talk to that are gonna be there. So we figured that's easier to do it a class at a time, so we'll do it with seniors first. And I believe it's a couple of weeks. I'll check with Ms. Chin, and then we're gonna do one in the early spring for the juniors.
Great news. Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Welcome.
Mr. Carney, would you like to speak about the changes to show choir?
Sure. Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for having me. So difficult decisions need to be made at times, and my decision to end show choir was definitely one of them. Decision was definitely not made lightly, and there are several reasons for which the decision was made. A few big ones, as, as well as many little ones. I'm not gonna go into all the reasons. I'll just give you the, the highlight. So show choir, you know, you know, as you know, show choir has been a huge part of Bartlett for long before I started working here in two thousand. And the pandemic has obviously been rough for the music program. But even before the pandemic, enrollment in the curricular performing groups has been dropping due to a number of factors, including scheduling and students transferring to other schools. Over the past few years, in general, getting students to be in show choir has grown increasingly difficult. And the pandemic only exasperated this trend. I feared that without music in the middle school last year, that things were gonna look dire this year, and in fact, my thoughts came true. So if I were to actually have show choir this year, it would be like a very, very small group consisting of mostly seniors with a couple of students from, from the eleventh and tenth grade. If there was show choir this year, there'd be no doubt in my mind that unfortunately, this would be the last year of, of its existence, and it wouldn't live up to the expectations that the students have for the group, the high expectations that they have. And I wanted the students' memories of show choir to be positive and not something that was a letdown. After making this decision, I didn't want them to not have something extracurricular, so I thought about a cappella. Acapella is something that's always interested me, and I thought this, this was the perfect time to start while I have a, a strong group of, of seniors. So some of the pros of a cappella is it's a smaller group. It's more mobile. There, it's easy to perform at community events. It requires less money. Obviously, money is, was one of the reasons. There are competitions available for them, and it also attracts more students that are hesitant, hesitant to do show choir due to the, the choreography. So in, in general, I figured that this was the year that a switch needed to be made because the, the numbers are just not there to support show choir.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair, I have one question. Will, will you, will you come and perform for us again? We'll be in person, I believe, soon.
We won't, we won't like crowd the space either, so. But it, it, it should be good. I just had the auditions tonight, and, and I'm very impressed with the talent of, of the students. And, and another thing about the a cappella is that it gets to showcase the students' talents a lot more. Like, it's, it's, a cappella is basically a soloist with the backup. So I'm, I'm giving any student that wants the opportunity to be the lead vocalist, the, the opportunity. So every student that wants to have the lead vocals in a song will have that opportunity. So it, it will showcase all of the students' talents rather than just like a few of the students' talents. So I'm really excited about it, and I know that obviously after the tiers, the students were really excited about it, too, so.
Thanks for thinking outside the box.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carney, for thinking of an alternative for the students who really love to perform in that way, and hopefully with the, kind of the buildup of the music programs at the middle school, there will be show choir again.
Let's hope. Definitely, definitely.
But, but thank you for, for all your work.
No, thank you for all your support. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, moving on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative, Colin Monerick. Welcome, Colin.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Very well, thank you.
Well, I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Thomas, for that amazing introduction. And so my first topic I wanna talk about was sports in Bartlett. So right now, we have a boys' and girls' soccer team, a football team, golf for boys and girls, a girls' volleyball team, uh, boys' and girls' cross, and boys' girls' cross-country. So I just wanna talk about the records. The boys' soccer unfortunately has started off the season oh and four with losses to B B T, Auburn, Grafton, and Oxford. The girls' soccer team has started unfortunately oh and three against Auburn, Grafton, and Oxford. The football team started this past Friday, and they lost to Wunenburg. Golf has started also oh and three and has lost to Sutton, Grafton, and Uxbridge. Volleyball, they are one and two with a win against Southbridge. They won yesterday, and they lost to Oxford and Bay Path. The cross-country team, the boys are oh and two with losses to Uxbridge and Quaybog, and the girls are oh and one and with a loss against Uxbridge. Any questions about that?
Okay, you had better news for us.
I, I do know. Uh, my next topic was, I wanted to talk about the student council fundraiser that they had this past Saturday. They raised almost nine hundred dollars, very big amount. Very successful for the student council. And my next topic, I wanna talk about the schedule. So our, as Ms. Thomas was saying, our rotating schedule is back. The sophomores and freshmen have not had this rotating schedule yet, so they are getting used to it, but everyone in the school seems to be doing fine, finding their classes. Not too difficult. I know me and my peers, we love the, the rotating schedule, especially the drop class a day. Makes things much easier, less stressful, not as much homework sometimes. You are able to focus on more things. You get that break you need. Uh, I think it just makes it easier not having the same class every single day at the same time unlike last year. Gives you, you know, a different like day-to-day, you know, situation. And another, another topic I wanna talk about the schedule is, um, so Bartlett did not offer any study halls this year for classes, and I know myself and other students who are also taking like higher-level A P classes or honors classes, we're very disappointed that because it's a very, you know, it gives us a time to do homework, step away, prepare, focus more on the work rather than rushing through it, go ask questions if we need that. Especially, you know, other people, because Bartlett does offer the college courses from Quincy and Nichols, and I did take one of those, too. Great opportunity there. And I just know we are all very upset with that decision. Any questions on that?
No questions.
Okay, and so in my last topic, I know I talked to Ms. Okay, and so in my last topic, I know I talked to Mr. Thomas and Ms. Gogan today about this at lunch, was Wi-Fi for students to upload work. So you know, me, myself, and a couple of other people, we still have to upload work like we did during COVID with taking a picture and uploading a document to Google Classroom. It's very hard without the Wi-Fi to upload the work, and it takes a long time. And Ms. Thomas did say he would, he had an answer to that. If you want to talk about it.
Mr. Thomas, do you have information regarding the Wi-Fi? And just for clarification for those that don't know, so there's no Wi-Fi capability for students in the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's because they just, you don't have the password to tie in?
It's not. It's not as simple as that. There's a bandwidth issue. There's a security issue. You cannot, you know, like he cannot find, ensure that every student's phone does not have malware in it or spyware in it or things like that. We also have there's a lot of other systems besides the students in their devices. Like each teacher has three different devices that are taking that bandwidth. Cafeterias, point-of-sale systems run off of that. There's a bunch of things that run off the Wi-Fi, and it's they can take pictures with their devices, their one-on-one devices. And then go home and take them up, but it's a huge, it's a bandwidth issue, and it's a security issue to have students have that Wi-Fi password.
I would say it's more of a security than a bandwidth. I mean, we've upgraded our bandwidth, but the problem is that all of the students have one-on-one devices in the building. So if you add all the teachers' computers plus the 500 or 400 student computers, and then you put on another 400 computers, phones or individual devices, it, you know, it can drain. Our Wi-Fi is strong, and it's certainly supporting all of our needs right now at the school. But our number one concern is security. I don't know if many of you have Apple devices. If you've gotten that email and saw it on the news where they're concerned about the security settings on phones, and if somebody has that phone and comes into our network and starts using our network, and you know, it travels to our network, it can cause bigger problems than just a bandwidth issue. And so those are some of the concerns, because we don't have the management systems for phones and managing all those devices on our network. So that's that's the biggest concern.
All right. Thank you for the information. Colin, is that the end?
Yep, that is. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you for that great report. We look forward to hearing from you at our next meeting. So moving on with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is old business. There is a monthly report on fundraising, and Colin actually covered that in his report. So the one monthly report that we have this time around is that Student Council Car Wash that was held this past Saturday. I'm glad to hear that they did so well. Next on the agenda is a COVID protocols update. Ms. Prangeli, can you speak to that?
I will announce that we are having a free vaccine clinic on September 15th tomorrow from nine to one at Bartlett. We do have our, we are doing our COVID dashboard that we'll be sending out weekly and posting on our website. And Dr. Gogan sends that out to all families. We meet every Tuesday, so that information is usually posted by Wednesday. We are still sending information into the state. The state has changed how they are collecting data this year. At first, they weren't going to do it, and now they just came out last week and implemented a new process as how we submit cases to the state. Last year, we were calling into a call center, and we were reporting, you know, the grade, whether it was a student or staff, what school they were at, whether they were in school within prior seven days of being positive. They've kind of narrowed that down a bit this year. All they really want to know. There's no more call center, so it's all going to be done online through the security portal at Department of Ed. They just want to know school and total number of positives in seven days. So you're just keeping track of the positives and whether they're student or staff in putting one number in. So it's a little easier to report. So they are looking at that as far as data. So it'll be interesting to see what they're sharing this year and how they're sharing it out. We look forward to that. As far as our Board of Health Director, Jennifer Sullivan, she has taken a new job in another community, but she is continuing to work with us under a new contract with the town of Webster until the new Board of Health Director starts. So she's been really critical and helping us stay on top of things. So we thank her for continuing to stay with the school department and work our way through that. And then as far as oh, Desi was rolling out a system this year for pool testing in schools. The permission slips were sent on September 9th to families. Right now, our district is only doing symptomatic testing in our schools. We are not doing the pool testing at this time, but always have the option and opportunity to join in at a later date. But they're rolling that system out. Hasn't gone as quickly as they've liked to other schools. I also think that was on the news last week, and I remember watching something about that also. So everybody's finding their way and working their way, and as you can tell, this, you know, the state is in the same boat as everybody else, trying to navigate the systems and get systems in place and get up and running. But I think our nurses are doing a bang-up job in our board of health. We had strong protocols in place last year, and they continue with those protocols this year. And I can't say enough for their efforts and what they do every day. You know, you can imagine having all the kids back, all the staffs back. Busy, it's a busy time in school districts for our nurses, and they are just, when you see them, thank them, because I think it's going to go a long way when you see them, thank them, because they're really working hard to keep us safe and to keep our kids safe.
Great. Thank you for that update, Ms. Prangeli. All right, now, moving on, under old business is the approval of the revised 2021-2022 employee handbook. Mrs. Prangeli, do you want to talk about that handbook at all? The revisions?
There were two revisions, and Lori, please correct me if I'm wrong. There was a change in language. I don't have it in front of me, but it was a change in language. There was notification of the superintendent if there was, if they were arrested, and there was language involved with. What was the other one, Lori? I'm drawing a blank. Was it the sick time?
Absences, yes. Excessive absences.
Right, removing the word, defining what excessive absences is. So we talked with the union. We're both on the same page with that, so we've changed the language in those two sections of the handbook. Everything else is the same.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the revised 2021-2022 employee handbook.
So moved.
I have a question for the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Millet.
If I can second this, because I don't approve a voting on it right now. I think there are still issues with this employee handbook that can affect affect us.
Affect us as the committee?
As a, I think there still could be grievances or legal actions in reference to some of the things in the employee handbook. It could open legal action up. I'm not, I I question. I'm asking. Can I still second a vote?
You can second a vote, and then we can pull the committee. I believe that were there only those two revisions made to the employee handbook, everything else is already approved and in place. It's just those two revisions?
Correct, and we did meet with the union, and they were okay with the changes.
So your concern, Mrs. Millet, is regarding one of the revisions?
No, that something hasn't been revised. So I will, I will second for a vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you pull the committee, please?
Member Bly?
I'm gonna vote no, because I wasn't made aware of Member Millet's questions on this handbook before I made my motion, so I would like to hear more from her on this, so I will vote no for now.
Member Millet?
No.
And Vice Chair Naprata?
No, so we will have further discussion and revisit this on a future agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on with the agenda under new business. We have an approval of fundraising organization, the Bartlett High School Gridiron Club. So annually, our fundraising groups are supposed to complete a new application, which the BHS Gridiron Club has done, and I believe there are some new people in charge at this point. Pull that up so I can name them, Lori and Ray Patterson. So thank you for stepping up. So they their proceeds benefit the Bartlett High School football as it has for many, many years. The players' equipment year, senior night banquet. So tonight, I am looking for a motion to approve the fundraising application organization for the BHS Gridiron Club.
So moved. Second.
Sorry, Lori. I'm new at this. There's a motion and a second. Could you pull the committee, please?
Member Bly?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. Thank you to that organization. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of member and of agreement between Webster and Webster Education Educators Association. That will be tabled at this point and will be brought up again on a future agenda. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of donations. And Mrs. Prangeli, do you want to talk about the Swiss Turn donation?
Oh, I am unmuted. I went to unmute, and I'm already unmuted. They donated a 3D printer on behalf of Swiss Turn to the school department, so we'd like to accept that.
That's great. Yes, and we need a motion to approve the donations?
If you want to do them all together, you can. You can do them separately if you would prefer.
All right, so we'll do them all together. So yes, that is excellent, an excellent donation of the 3D printer by Swiss Turn, so we appreciate that. And the next donation, Mrs. Prangeli, by Holy Trinity?
Yep, they donated some miscellaneous school supplies and backpacks to the school department, so thank you for that. And then we have Miss Anna Whited, who donated some miscellaneous school supplies. Thank you, Anna. She's always every year coming through with something. And then the last one is Miss Jane Pastore. She reached out to me at the end of last school year, actually, with an idea of donating some money to cover this rental of an instrument. Last year, we knew we didn't have a music program, and we were looking to have one. We were bringing it back. She had a friend who loved music and was into singing and loved everything about music in schools. And I believe she was a Webster student years ago. And she, when she passed, her friend Jane wanted to do something in her memory. So she called and asked if she could pay for a rental for a Webster Middle School student and donate that annually on behalf of her friend Diane Smith. So I explained to her that, you know, depending, you know, there are all ranges in prices. It's hard to put a dollar depending on what the kid, the child plays. And she said she would leave it up to the music teacher to pick a student that maybe couldn't afford an instrument or something that had a passion for music in in some way. And once we have that student, we'll reach out to her, and she'll cover the rental for that instrument for the school year.
That's very sweet and generous offer in memory of her friend. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the donations of the 3D printer by Swiss Turn, the supplies by Holy Trinity Parish and Anna Whited, and the to cover the cost of the music rental donated. I oh, let's see. I can't, I don't remember the woman's name. Oh, Jane Pastor, in memory of her friend Diane Smith.
So moved. Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Would you pull the committee, please?
Member Bly?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. So next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of bills, warrants, payroll, and vouchers. Lori, will you need some people to come and sign?
Probably. Mrs. Prangeli, who will you need?
Mrs. Millet, if you could come in and sign the warrant, that would be fantastic.
Okay, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So next item on the agenda, I will approve a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Would you pull the committee, please?
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Bly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.